Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 4th, 2020 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmembers Agujanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Harpenian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian. Here. Councilmember Agujanian, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. February is Black History Month, a time when we should learn about the many struggles and celebrate the numerous contributions by our African-American brothers and sisters. James Baldwin was a renowned African-American novelist, playwright, and activist who often wrote about the black experience and spoke out for civil rights and the rights of black Americans. In his seminal work, No Name in the Streets, he wrote, quote, "Ignorance allied with power is the most ferocious enemy justice can have." Today, as we look back on the injustices of our past and focus on the future of our great nation, let us pray that we will always use power to drive out ignorance, to shine a light on discrimination, to work with our neighbors of all backgrounds for the betterment of our city and the welfare of all mankind. Let us pray that we rise above the divisiveness and work to build a world where knowledge and compassion will bring us closer to our neighbors and ensure a brighter future for all. We pray for empathy and love to govern our actions, and as always, we pray for peace here at home and around the world tonight and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the February 4th regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Wednesday, January 29, 2020, on the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Next item is the presentation and appointments, three A's Agenda Preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 11, 2020.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For February 11, 2020, we don't have any business agenda item for the Housing Authority. However, we'll have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority to commence at 3:00 PM. We have one report from Director of Community Development regarding City Council Housing Authority consideration to join the California Community Housing Agency. We also have a special meeting of the City Council commencing at 3:00 PM. Three reports from Director of Community Development, starting with Montreal Shopping Park Business Improvement District Annual Work Plan for calendar year 2020, followed by Greater Downtown Glendale Association's Calendar Year 2019 Annual Report and Calendar Year 2020 Budget. And then a report regarding Circlavia Glendale Meet at Water Village Open Streets Event on June 14, 2020. That evening commencing at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular City Council meeting. We have on the consent items, two reports from General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. First one, a contract award for the Grandview Pump Number Two Unit Replacement Project. And next one is regarding Clean Fuel Reward Program and a report from Director of Public Works regarding Fiscal Year 1920 ADA Improvements and Sidewalk Repair Program and Annual Crack Seal Program, Phase One. Under Action Items, two reports from Fire Chief. First one is regarding Amendments to the Glendale Municipal Code relating to Industrial Waste Disposal Permit Fee and then Annual Bus Abatement Program for year 2020. And finally, City Attorney regarding Amendments to City's Municipal Code pertaining to lobbyist registration and disclosure requirements for council members, applicants, and individuals appearing before the City Council of familial, business, and community organizational relationships. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. The next presentation is not on the agenda, but I'd like to call up Mark Manning from LA Metro. And let me put this presentation in context for everyone. We had done a bus transit route study several months ago, and we had the results last week, and actually, a few weeks back. Before us, last week was the issue as to whether we would purchase five new buses to serve the increased service that we were planning throughout the city, as well as the retrofitting of two of our existing buses with the new power plant and transmission. And as I said, Mark is from Metro. I'll ask him to introduce himself in a moment, but I've asked Mark to come forward because this is a rather new era in transportation, and as we're dealing with new technology, Mark hopefully will address the best practices for an organization such as the City of Glendale, whose desire is to go to a complete electric fleet as soon as possible, but within realistic bounds and steps. So that's the basic context of why I asked Mark to come forward. And Mark, if you could please introduce yourself and just a little bit about your background and what you do at Metro, and then you can get into the presentation.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? My name's Mark Manning. I'm the Senior Director of Vehicle Engineering at LA Metro. So my team is responsible for the bus engineering, acquisition, and the master planning for the zero emission bus strategy that we have at Metro. Prior to Metro, I used to be at Chicago Transit, where I also led the electric bus program there, and then prior to that, I was at Cummins doing diesel engine development. So, and I'll go ahead and start a little bit, and if you've got any questions, just let me know. So this is a little process map. So this first slide's a process map, so you can understand all the, I guess, priorities that you have to do when you're planning electric bus. And I think the key, you know, for us in public transit, the key is serving our customers, right? So we need to make sure that, you know, the construction phasing doesn't impact operations. We need to make sure that the operating range, you know, is cost feasible and works for the way our strategy, you know, the way that we deploy our vehicles. We need to make sure our staff's trained for the new vehicles, which obviously, if you're going from CNG to electric, there will be some training that needs to be done. So this is just to show you the cycle of what you need to consider as you're deploying to electric as a holistic master plan. Now, this is one of the things that we're really talking about that's very important, I would say, for a successful implementation of battery electric buses, is appropriate modeling, right? Because you want to make sure, because what we do at LA Metro may not work for Glendale, may not work for Chicago, because it's really, with a CNG vehicle, you know, the range is such that you can, you can almost put it in any agency, and it would be successful. But for a battery electric bus, range is really a, is a context of the operating environment. What, you know, how many passengers you're carrying, what the range needs for your particular city are, you know, there's all those various things that you need to consider to model this effectively. And that is what I would consider the key part of making sure you have successful development. If you don't model it appropriately, it won't be as successful as it could be. So that'll also make sure that you manage the cost, both in the cost of the capital investments, the operating investments, because there's different charging strategies you may need to do, like there's overnight charging strategy, there's in route, which is what we're doing on the Orange Line in the San Fernando Valley. So you need to figure out which best works for your site, which land you own, that's the big thing, and then that will help inform what kind of battery electric bus you should be procuring, because there is different battery sizes you can go for. So this is just, I'm going through some of the challenges that you need to make sure that you, like, as you're going through battery electric buses, what you need to look at. I would say the key things really is timelines, and this is really rough timelines. Basically, it takes two to three years to get your first bus. Also, you have to worry about infrastructure as being part of that timeline, too, which I'll discuss, but, you know, from a practical point of view, you know, it takes about a half a year to a year to do your specification development. It can take longer, depending if your model takes a little bit longer. From my experience, right, it takes about a one year to award, you know, from the RFP cycle and, you know, all the cycles. That's all, that's site dependent based off the, you know, various procurement strategies you may do. And then one year after the pilot buses typically, or one year after award is when you typically can get a pilot bus. That's because you're trying to get into the production schedule. There's also long lead time items, such as the battery, that would prevent you from building the bus earlier. So those are some of the key things. One of the things is that current battery electric buses, if you're going with full HVAC and passenger loading, and keep in mind, you have to plan based off your worst-case day, right? Because if you don't plan for that, if you think about in the hot summer, your bus may not go as far. So you really need to build in that design margin for your vehicle. So it's important to model this to determine exactly what range of vehicle you need, as I said before. And right now, in California, we have curb axle weight limits that are, that are actually coming online, so in 2022, you have to get below 22,000 pounds in your curb axle limit. The reason that's important is because weight isn't, in order to add more range, you need to add more battery, which adds more weight, right? So because of the, basically, the weight going down that we're allowed to put, the range that you can put on the bus can effectively go down, depending on when you procure. And so the technological risk, right, is really, I'll call the first modern era battery electric bus is really Foothill Transit in the U.S., right? And so in 2014, there's not enough data to say necessarily if the maintenance cost will be cost-effective right now, because, you know, we have a 12-year life cycle of a vehicle. You need to protect yourself to make sure you have the appropriate warranty set and things like that. So I wouldn't say right now, you know, if you see reports saying operating costs may be cheaper, it's actually not fully realized yet, because there's not enough history on buses. And as I said, it is really based on the environment in which you operate. So that's one thing that I would say on, you know, some of the risk. And then also charging infrastructure standards, those are just now being adopted by all the bus manufacturers, and so they're still being implemented. And so that's the other key, is that if you would have bought a battery electric bus, you know, like, two years ago, your charging infrastructure might be basically a paperweight at this point. It might only be able to serve certain vehicles. And then the other key thing is your staff needs to be trained for that. So the infrastructure timeline, that's the other thing that really is something you need to be concerned about, because obviously, you can't get the bus before your charging infrastructure's in place. So, and so this is really what's the pace, another one of the pacing items. And so, you know, yet again, it's specification development is part of it. One of the key things you need to know is you need to know what charger you're going to put in there, because one charger installation is different from another charger installation. And right now, the current process is you get chargers with your bus manufacturer. So you can't, until you award your bus, you may not know what your charging manufacturer is. Now that we're doing charging standards, it might help decouple that a little bit. And then, of course, you've got the time to award your construction, and then the time for construction. The time for construction, I put a half year for a year, which is, that's assuming you have power that can feed to that location. So from the discussions we've had with SCE and LEDBP, if you need to upgrade the power to a certain level, it could take three to five years. Yet again, since you're using Glendale Power and Light, if I recall correctly.
Water and Power.
Water and Power. If you use that, it may be different timeframe. So that's site-dependent, right? So that would be one of the things your, you know, the staff would have to look into. The space at the divisions is another key critical point. This is actually, you know, the pictures on the right are actually what we're looking at, at LA Metro to help with space. So because of, we're trying to go aerial and to help save space at the divisions, because if we put the infrastructure on the ground, which is typically how it's mounted these days, is you lose parking, which means we end up losing the amount of buses that we can park. And that is just now being done, you know, we'll probably be one of the first people in the U.S. doing that at LA Metro. So there is some kind of risk opposed, you know, because it's still being worked through. So that's the things you need to, and then also, staff needs to be maintained, you know, trained to understand the charging equipment. And then I would say the other thing to worry about as well is also the funding, right? As I said, operational cost is something that we don't necessarily have a good grasp on, because the technology's very new, but also, it's also site-dependent because of utility rates, right? So you can have great rates that are good for depot charging, that are overnight, but you could also have great rates that are better for, like, midday charging, all depending on where you're located. So that'd be one thing you'd have to look at to make sure you have the most cost-effective deployment. And then the capital costs, that's, those are the numbers that you're looking at, is about $450,000 plus per bus. And that's really because, right now, a CNG, a battery electric bus is about 250,000 to 400,000 more. Keep in mind, the range is not the same, right? So you're paying for 300-plus miles of range and 150 mile, 120, 150 miles of range. And then the chargers that, you know, if you're getting the chargers that we're getting at our depot, they're about 100, 150,000 per charger. And then, so that's a cost that you'll probably get, but the charging infrastructure to install it is about another 100,000. That's site-dependent, that would be something you would have to do, part of bid process, maybe you can get it a little bit more cost-effective, but that's really the numbers you're looking at to deploy. And then the summary really is that you're looking at a two- to three-year timeframe to really deploy a battery electric, your first battery electric bus, and that's just because of infrastructure, you know, just timelines to get, you know, the bus in build, and then just making sure you plan it well so that, you know, you have an effective, successful deployment, right? And then, like I said, the implementation challenges is aligning procurement time of infrastructure and bus. That's probably been the biggest issue with pretty much all deployments, is getting the buses and the chargers to come, you know, close to each other. The weight limits of the battery electric bus, yet again, that prevents you from getting more range, and you might not be able to get a one-for-one replacement of a CNG. The impact to operations, yet again, service, our service is key, making sure our customers, you know, can rely on our service, right? So we don't want to make, we don't want to impact the divisions when we're doing all the infrastructure upgrades and then prevent buses from going out. And then, yet again, it's the additional capital costs to deploy at this time and the unknown operational cost impact, just because of, you know, it's a very new technology. And that's the end, but I can, you know, talk about whatever questions you might have.
Mr. Quintero.
What can you tell us about metro agencies that have deployed buses, even in a testing situation?
Well, I would say, you know, I'm going to speak from my experience. You know, Chicago, we had, you know, two battery electric buses that I helped deploy there. It was successful. It was a very, like I said, it was a very measured deployment. You know, we planned it very well, and then that helped us, when I was there, helped deploy the larger strategy. LA Metro, very similar. They did a small initial pilot run a few years ago, and now we're looking at going for the Orange Line and Silver Line. So really, everyone has taken like a small, measured approach. I would say, you know, there is, it's a little bit different now than what it was when some of the people first deployed. You might be able to do like a demo bus to get a little feel of the bus now, maybe do some little test routes, because now the buses are kind of available. You know, two, three years ago, the buses weren't as easily available. You were basically buying a bus that wasn't developed.
Well, in Chicago, after the initial two, were more purchased, or?
Yes. They're right now doing procurement for the Chicago 66 Route there. And they're doing a very similar charging strategy that we're doing on the Orange Line with in-route charging.
And what companies currently build buses? I'm only familiar with BI.
So for battery electric, there's, for 40 foot, which is the size that y'all typically run, there's BYD, there's Proterra, there's New Flyer, and right now, Gillig, and Nova as well. Those are the five companies you can buy from right now.
And there are American companies that build them here, or?
All of those are Buy America certified, so you would be able to buy them for the regulations, correct?
Ms. Devine.
Can you explain to me how Foothill went 100% electric, like, it seemed like overnight? Is there a city of Foothill?
Foothill Transit.
Foothill Transit.
They have just put together their master plan, so I think their plan is 2030. I can't really speak exactly for them, but they, the only buses they have, I believe, they've electrified the one line that's the 391, I believe, and I believe that's 14, but I, don't quote me on these numbers.
Right, right, right.
I believe there are 14 buses there, and then I believe they have just, and the numbers, I'm not exactly right, they have just bought Proterra buses that are, I think, the 440 kilowatt, and I believe there's like 10 to 14 of those. I'm not sure their fleet size. I know they're not 100% right now.
Okay.
There were, I think they have the same timeline as us, going 2030, maybe a little bit earlier, but I can't really speak exactly for their schedule.
Well, I'm just curious, because I was at a conference, I think it was last year, and I believe they got an award for going 100% electric buses. And I thought, wow, how do they do that?
Yeah.
But it's only one line that?
I believe, the only agencies I'm aware of that are, I believe, there's one agency in South Carolina that's 100%, and they have, I think, five buses. And then I think Antelope Valley is 100%, are pretty close to 100%. I think those are the two agency, the only agencies that are very close to 100 right now.
But you would say that it took them that, this long, like, five years, or, you know, three to five years to get it?
I believe, yeah, I believe, well, it depends, like I said, it's a measured step to figure out the charging strategy that works, right?
Yeah.
You know, trying to figure out, everyone's got a different procurement strategy in terms of what your government agency allows, et cetera. So I think that's really the way that I, and then also the utility. Like I said, the big key is making sure you have enough power. For, I think, your fleet here, you have like 30 or 40 buses around that. And to, just to kind of let you know, a 30-bus deployment, right, is over 5 megawatts of power, which is a fair amount. I think, I don't have it on this, but I think it was 1.2 megawatts is roughly the amount of power used at the Bank of America Building in, I think, San Francisco. I think it's the Bank of America, Transamerica Building.
Hmm, okay. That's a lot. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Other questions? Mr. Quintero.
Thank you. The buses that you have currently, what's the situation with them?
Right now, we have one bus that we're piloting.
So Metro has only one bus?
So we have one bus right now. We will have the Orange Line electrified by the end of the year.
And how many, how many buses?
That'll be 45 buses.
45 buses?
Five buses from BYD, that's 60-foot, and 40 from New Flyer, which is also 60-foot. And right now, we're in the process of doing the construction of the in-route charging stations for those particular sites.
And the charging stations in your transportation center is already built?
Yes. So that was, we put in spots for 10 plug-in chargers, just to support, and then we have, we're putting eight in-route charging locations. So if you're familiar with the Orange Line, we will have charging stations at Chatsworth, Canoga, and North Hollywood.
Are they like superchargers, that they charge the batteries fast?
Correct. So 450 kilowatts, which is, so, for example, that would charge like four Teslas in an hour, you know, four 100-kilowatt Teslas, so.
Okay. And on page six, the numbers that have in here, 450,000 additional capital cost, 250 to 400 more versus CNG bus, these are not part of the, I mean, the cost of the bus is separate, right? I mean, I know you asked, you said 250 to 400 more versus CNG, but that 450, 150, and 100 is about 4, 5, 6, 700,000 dollars plus the cost of the bus, per bus?
So the cost of the bus is the 250 to 400. Yet again, that varies based off the size. I actually got that number from the state schedule that California recently did, that was roughly the cost.
It says 250 to 400 more versus CNG. The cost of the bus is not 400?
No, the cost of the bus is probably, so, a CAG bus that we're buying at Metro is around 700?
So it's almost a million dollars?
Correct.
For electric, but that's what?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So each bus will be a million dollars plus 400, 400 to 600,000 dollars cost of infrastructure per bus, and it will take one to three years, basically, to plan it and build the infrastructure, bring the power in, and get your first bus, basically.
Correct. So it's the 2 to 400,000 per bus, and then it's the 100 to 150 per the charger, and then to install that charger, it's about 100,000 dollars.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Installation is almost as much as the charger.
And I would caution, that is very site-dependent, right? It really depends on trenching and, you know, that would be the one that is variable, but the charging cost is pretty much set in stone. I mean, that, I mean, that might go down a little bit, but that's roughly the cost of getting the charger and doing some, a little.
How long does it take for them to be charged?
This is battery-dependent, right? So for the buses, you know, so roughly a 300-kilowatt bus, or that's roughly, with that $100,000 charger, that takes us about two hours.
Oh, that's, that's.
Yeah. So that's 150 kilowatt hour charger.
And between all these companies that you mentioned, New Flyer and the rest of them, which one is, has a better quality in general? Do we know, or because there's not many of them out there yet, we don't, we don't have that?
I would just say there's not enough data for me to comment on which bus is better. I think all of them, all manufacturers have their strengths, and so, and there's not, there's no real published data, really, for me to say which one's better.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero.
I assume our terminal is going to have the capability, our bus terminal will have the capability for charger installation and so forth.
The new Beeline facility, that's where we plan to place the charger for the pilot that we're going to have in place. So it will be installed at the Beeline facility.
Finally, the last thing, if you can comment on it, I'm not sure if that's your area of expertise, but the buses we are getting, the new ones, are having the CNG Cummins L9N engine, turbocharged, six-cylinder, 8.9-liter. Do you have any information on that, and what do you think about them?
I mean, those buses are obviously the lowest emissions that you can buy. It's 90, the NOx levels are 90% below the prior certification level. So in relation to the timing in which y'all, you know, you've mentioned you need the buses for the new service, there really is no better alternative, right? So I would say that would be the biggest point of that, is that it is the best option, given the timeframe, to get a battery electric bus in service that is going to be, I would say, be successful and not impact the service.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out to Glendale.
No problem.
We appreciate it, and we'll see you at Metro.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Metro.
Next item, please.
Next item is consent items, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting a separate one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. No cards were submitted from the public to poll.
Mr. Agaganyan.
Okay. Before we go over this, I just want to pull it, I guess, to make some comments.
Which one, four B?
Number four B.
Okay, so four B is pulled.
With the exception of four B, I'll, uh, move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agaganyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes, please read four B.
Four B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Chief Information Officer Regarding Amendment of Cities Contract Number C-105118A with OSI Soft LLC to expand the existing software license and services agreement to an enterprise program agreement for Glendale Water and Powers GWP Process Information PI Historian System Software for a total amount not exceed two million two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for a five-year term. You want is the motion authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the software and license agreement.
You want me to make the comment, or you want to explain what it is? Because I know...
No, sir, I was just here to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, I, uh, I just generally, I worried about, like, on this case, a company like OSI Soft, as you, as mentioned, this is the, an excellent company to work with, starts with one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar contract in two thousand eleven, then in two thousand eighteen, we, uh, had another contract with the company for, to perform, whatever they were doing, for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, right? The second?
Correct.
And all of a sudden, now, we have a contract for two million two hundred and thirty-six thousand, that the same company, uh, continuing, will continue to perform, right?
Correct.
My worry is, as I said, that there is no bid. You have explained to me that this is the best, otherwise would be more expensive.
Correct.
I just want to be on the record that usually, this is maybe a practice, different companies, they come in based on little contract, or they, uh, offer lower bids to get a job, bid the city or a company, and then later, they, uh, there is nobody else to compete with, because you already are in that city or in that, working with the company, that you already know what you have to do, you're familiar with it, and the others, they don't get the chance to bid or do something. Just, I want to make the comment, which that bothers me.
Mr. Quintero?
Well, yeah, I think you better describe the circumstances.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Agaganyan, in this particular case, those contracts that you referred to in two thousand eleven and then the later amendment, those were pilot programs. So we were bringing the company in to do a very small portion of what it is that we do, uh, and we, we essentially tested them for, for almost ten years, and they did an excellent job. In the meantime, it didn't prohibit us from looking at other alternatives, and in the industry, there are alternatives, I will give you that, but those companies that provide this historian-type software system also package their pro, uh, their, uh, their software with all of the other, uh, aspects. So in other words, if you buy their software, for the historian part of it, you have to buy their SCADA, you have to buy their OOS outage management, you have to buy all of the different packages. What we have in place now, we like, it works very well for us, we spent a lot of money to get it, and this firm has come in and said, we'll take what you have, and we'll put it all together, we'll consolidate that and give you a central package, and we'll do it at a very reasonable price. The other ones, I can tell you, and, and Mr. Bradford can, can verify that, those costs would be five to ten times what we're asking for tonight, because we'd have to wholesale replace the majority of the software, the programs that we already have in place that are tied to our metering system, that are tied to our substation systems, that are tied to our dispatch systems, that are tied to our power management and power supply operations. That was one of the beauties of this firm, is that they came in, put all of our systems together, and consolidated what we had versus us having to buy all new. So that's a little bit of the, of the background on that. I certainly understand your point, I, I would not, and, and I know, I, I agree with you, Mr. Agaganyan, we've seen that happen before, but this is not the case. We brought them in on a very limited pilot basis, tested them, were happy with what we had. When we started to look at expanding the system, they, they were really the, the best opportunity for us, and that's why we're making the recommendation.
Thank you. Okay. Would someone like to move?
I'll move four B.
A second.
Four B.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agaganyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
I'll start from my right. Mr. Agaganyan, anything?
The right is there.
I know, but she passed.
I don't have a comment.
It's like poker, if you don't, if you don't want to play the card, you pass. Mr. Quintero, Mr. Carpetian?
I passed, too.
Okay, great. Tomorrow is the, uh, Chamber of Commerce State of the City Luncheon, also honoring, Phil Lanze fame as Man of the Year. Is that the title, Man of the Year? I forget who the other, there's a business and a organization as well.
Helen McDonough from Massage Envy, uh, the Forest Lawn, celebrating a hundred years, is a chamber member, and then the, um, Sat Vasquez Accounting Group is Business of the Year.
Great, okay, and I'll be addressing all the great things that council has done in the past year. Next item, please.
Next item is the three-minute, uh, portion for public comments, reserved for community announcements, as well as individuals who wish to speak for three minutes now instead of five minutes later.
I did have one item, if I can jump in front of the other, uh, folks who have submitted their cars, cards. I don't know if anyone saw this on the news last week, uh, but Chief Lanzes was there with a new bit of technology, thermal imaging cameras, and because of them, we are in good hands here in Glendale. It is used by our Glendale Fire Department. These cameras will be issued to each firefighter, firefighter on duty, and can potentially save more lives and protect property by increasing two vital parts of an emergency call, speed and safety. Just two weeks ago, two GFD firefighters fell through the first floor into the basement of an apartment fire and were rescued by firefighters who were equipped with these cameras. This tool will help locate victims and hotspots when every second counts. And as demonstrated, uh, on television, um, there was a smoke-filled room which, uh, was basically opaque, you could not see through it, but with the use of that device, the imaging of a, uh, person, I presume, or a pet, uh, could be identified, located, and then rescued. Isn't that right, chief? Okay, do, do you have anything else to, to add to that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Sylvia Alonsis, your Fire Chief. I, I think you said it very well. Uh, these cameras are, bringing this technology to each of our firefighters is an outstanding addition to our fire department. It will undoubtedly save lives. The, the crew captain of the, the company that went in and rescued our two firefighters two weeks ago did say that, had it not been for his thermal imaging camera that he used, he would have definitely not found the, the downed members as quickly as he did. Uh, so the technology's outstanding, I'd like to congratulate each of you for supporting us, as well as our Glendale Fire Foundation, and, and bringing this technology to the hands of each of our fifty firefighters on duty every day.
Thank you. You look good on TV, too, chief.
Thanks.
Okay, that's great. Um, just a bit of good news. Okay, I interrupted you, Mr. Kasak, and you had read the, uh, community event announcement item. First card I have is from Christopher Najarian.
That name sounds familiar.
Uh, good evening, members of council, mayor as well. I, um, I'm here today to announce a community event. This, uh, Sunday, February ninth, at three P M., I'm proud to announce that my grandmother will be having a book signing for her newly published book titled Morrow. My grandmother, I assume many don't know, was born in the thirties in Aleppo, Syria, to, uh, immigrants from the Armenian genocide. And this book really entails the detailed stories of her, um, at some points tragic, but at some points joyful life, uh, her struggle to move to the United States and provide education for her family down the line, and, um, do what every woman hopes to do most, raise a great family, um, unfortunately, in this situation. It, the book is a little tragic, but, um, there's always that silver lining of hope in every chapter and every story in her book. So I think it will hopefully become a, uh, Glendale bestseller, uh, hopefully we can coin that term, and I hope to see a lot of people there. This, again, is going to be Sunday, February ninth, at three P M. It's going to be located at the Armenian Society of Los Angeles, which is located at, uh, one-one-seven South Louis Street, Glendale, California, nine-one-two oh five. So, uh, once again, uh, members of the community are welcome, uh, it's going to be this Sunday. I hope to see a big turnout there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor, to your mom.
She's an incredible woman.
Yes, she is.
The next speaker I have is Ara Menugian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, staff. My name is Ara Menugian, and I'm coming here tonight to remind you of your oath of office. When each of you were elected, selected by the people to represent them in the city of Glendale as city officials, um, you took an oath of office, office in which, you gave it to already, in fact, some of you, uh, in two thousand seventeen, in which you said you would uphold the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of California. So as we move forward with a very serious issue, which we have been discussing for weeks and weeks and months regarding the deployment of a five-G system, which, as we know, five-G doesn't exist right now, we're in the process of getting close-range four-G radiators that we know from studies that have been published and recent, um, recent findings by a very, uh, a study which was supposed to debunk the dangers of, um, RF radiation, we found, or they found, I should say, after many, many years and millions of dollars, that in fact, RF is directly connected with, uh, causing cancer and DNA damage. So tonight, you're gonna, there's a hearing that you're going to be continuing, um, I would strongly encourage you to uphold your oath of office and protect the people of Glendale, because as we know, again, and as I just said, four-G, which is what they want to put in very close proximity, by the way, which is not really a, a very good thing, um, does cause cancer, and it does cause DNA damage. Also, we have asked for, and we have not heard an answer yet, Mr. Garabedyan, we talked about a study session on the five-G deployment. I would ask that, since we know now, the hearing that we're hearing has nothing to really do with five-G, it's a four-G pole that they want to put on, um, uh, near a property that belongs to one of the developers, um, I would ask you to put a motion forward right away, and let's see whether we're going to have a study session or not. We really need to know our, our elected officials who want to be re-elected in office, where they stand on this issue, and this is a very important issue, that we should have a study session immediately, where experts can be brought in. So, Mr. Garabedyan, I would ask you to set a motion. Uh, Mr. Agaganyan, since you also know about health issues, and you've already acknowledged that this type of technology can cause damage and health issues, I would ask that you second, and then let's see where the rest of the council members stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Agaganyan, I mean, Mr. Carpetian?
Yes, I, I made that motion, I believe it was last week or the week before, and there was no support for it, so I don't know, making the same motion. But I made that motion...
Mr. Menugian?
I made that motion already, and, and it was, I, I don't know how many times you can make the same motion. I made that motion, and it was turned down, and there was no support for it, so, if anyone else wants, likes to make that same motion, they're, they're, they're free to do so.
And certainly, we're not preventing any private group of citizens to organize a community discussion on the five-G issue, or any issue that they feel important. Right, again. Right, okay. Tony Passarella?
Good evening, Mayor, all council members and staff, Tony Passarella. I just want to, um, address something that your expert, Mr. Kramer, talked about last week in regards to the, um, the Maryland, um, small cell site.
Let me interrupt, uh, interrupt you and let you know that we will be hearing that
No, I know.
very shortly, and if you want your remarks to be part of that record for this appeal discussion, I can take your card at that time.
Oh...
In fact, is it more appropriate, you'll have your time, just, just a moment, is it more appropriate that we put this discussion at the...
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, I think part of it is, part of the answer is, depending on what he wants to speak on specifically, our, our recommendation is going to be to only reopen the hearing as to one of the issues in the appeal, which is the, the alternative site, so if there are other issues...
Okay.
...that we were going to request that the, the mayor limit it to those issues, but it's certainly up to you how, the scope of the, of the hearing when it comes back up.
So let me err on the side of your preference. Why don't we start the three-minute timer again, and you can address any...
Yeah, I was just under the understanding that we weren't going to be able to talk at the hearing times.
I'm going to permit a very limited, uh, amount of, uh, maybe a minute or so for that appeal, but you're certainly welcome to use your three minutes at this point.
Uh, yeah, so Mr. Kramer, uh, talked about four-G, yes, in fact, it is four-G, so he's on us there, and Mayor Najarian, you kind of emphasized, this is four-G. I mean, you just kind of put an inflection on that, and he, and he countered, and he said, yes. Well, I did a public records request, and I wish Mr. Kramer, uh, had told us this, and he didn't, um, this is a public records request, it's about this small cell site there in Maryland. Thus, to address the existing and forecasted demand and to support five-G speeds in the near future, AT&amp;T plans to deploy small cell facilities within public right-of-ways. So let's, let's get this, make this very, very clear. This rollout, these twenty-three that have been okayed by the Public Works Department, and the eighty-four that are in the pipeline, let's make no mistake about this, these are all, uh, five-G ready. So when they flip, when the, infrastructure goes in, they flip the switch, it's five-G, okay? Let's get that straight. Okay, already a little out-of-the-box, um, slide presentation here. Let's focus on the bottom one, the delta wave. This can be measured, this is science, this is science. So, deep sleep, zero-point-five to four hertz, hertz, deep sleep, loss of bodily, bodily awareness and repair. So that's what we'll repair. Uh, Mr. Carpetian, I'm, I'm concerned about Mary. I'm concerned about Mary, we, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, and...
Don't, so, don't just show her, her house with my sign in front of it, because...
Okay, no, no, I'm not going to show that. I'm, I'm concerned about Mary, and I'm concerned about the Marys in the future, when in fact, the, the twenty-three, the eighty-four, and the hundreds in the near future go up, how many more Marys are going to be? How many more Marys are going to be out there that can't sleep at night? Okay, there's a little bit of more information. So that's natural, right? This can be measured, um, delta waves. So let's convert a hertz to megahertz, which Mary is getting blasted, and, and she's getting blasted with this roughly seven hundred megahertz, which translates out to seven hundred million hertz. Does that, does that like, have anything go off, ring a bell or anything, does that do anything? So five hertz when you sleep, but let's, let's blast Mary with seven hundred million hertz? I don't, I don't think so. Little more information here, the commission, FCC raised two-point-seven billion across the auctions, and the winners mostly were the major players. AT&amp;T bid over nine-hundred-eighty-two million for eight-hundred-and-thirty-two twenty-four gigahertz, uh, licenses. Let me just state that, twenty-four gigahertz? Did you know that airport body scanners, twenty-four gigahertz? I understand that distance and, and duration matter, but let me repeat that. AT&amp;T bid eight-hundred-and-thirty-one licenses at twenty-four... AT&amp;T bid 831 licenses at 24 gigahertz. That's military wave frequencies. That's reserved for military up until now. So please pay attention to this. Airport body scanners, 24 gigahertz. I don't know what's going on, but that's really suspicious to me. I'm concerned about Mary. Did you go visit her yet?
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Next speaker is Irene Varjevedian.
I'm here again to ask for a study session, and I remember, Mr. Carpetian, last time, I think you said that we can ask for a motion after this appeal. So I would really ask, as a, you know, resident of Glendale, for you to honor our request. We've been asking this for a long time, and I don't see any, anything that should stop this. I mean, we're entitled to come as a city council and have a study session and, you know, bring the professionals and people to talk about it. They talk about different things, about the trash, about other things that's not as critical for health, but this is very important for our health. And Mrs. Devine, Devine, sorry, you're an incumbent. I would really encourage, if you honor, you know, what the citizens would like to have. We would like to have a study session. I don't see any negative, you know, drawback about this. So I would really appreciate if you guys can make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Masri.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, City Council members. Again, I'm a chemist by degree and the Research Director of the California Brain Tumor Association. My work requires me to be, to remain on the cutting edge of information regarding wireless communication, science, law, and policy. Everything I presented to you last week was marginalized by Mr. Kramer, a tactic that I have seen done by the wireless industry way too many times. So I looked up Mr. Jonathan Kramer's background, and I discovered that he is not the unbiased advisor for the city that we all thought he was. According to his bio and his information, Mr. Kramer boasts that he's the former Field Engineer Representative for Motorola Communication and Electronics. He's a senior member for the Society of Broadcast Engineers. He has over 30 years of wireless and cable television telecommunications technology, engineering, and management expertise. He has been licensed as a telecommunication contractor in California for over 25 years. He holds the highest-grade FCC land-based commercial and amateur radio licenses, as well as FCC's highest-grade marine radio maintainer license, along with many FCC licenses, and it goes on and on. Mr. Kramer is intertwined with the industry. How can we take his testimony to be unbiased? I sent everyone here an email as a rebuttal of what Mr. Kramer testified and marginalized in my statement last week. I hope you all had a chance to look at it. Did you see it? Did anyone see it? So we personally spoke with an FCC, with the FCC regarding this Kewa Band of Cherokee Indians, and they did say, every single small cell requires a NEPA review. And I actually put the person we spoke with, his email address, and I urge you to please call the FCC. Don't rely on my word or Mr. Kramer's word. And ask them, do they, do we need paperwork in our file saying that there's been a NEPA review done? And let them tell you. I urge you to do that. In my statement about electromagnetic fields are not being insured, Mr. Kramer said that Verizon, if they could not insure the third Tuesday of the month, you know, that that's what they would do, when in fact, every insurance company will not insure electromagnetic fields. Reinsurance companies, which are the insurance companies to insurance companies, rate them as high risk for casualty and property. And I have this information here for you. I also have studies for people from all around the world, so this is not just done in one place. This is done in France, in Poland, in Germany, of people living around cell towers and the kinds of symptoms that they get. It's the same symptoms they get. Insomnia, heart palpitations, ear ringing, headaches, and it's the same symptoms that are experienced around cell towers. So if we can move these things away from people, move them away from people, we need a NEPA review. We need you to ask the FCC to do safety testing to protect your residents. So I'll put these on record for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masri. I think our timer is set to vibrate.
I don't know why.
It's not giving a bell.
Sorry, we've had a couple of issues here.
Okay.
Thanks.
I don't have any other cards. That will close this portion of oral communications.
Thank you.
Can we have the next item, please?
Under action items, that ADA is director of Public Works regarding award contract to ACCO Engineered Systems, Inc. for HVAC improvements and repairs at city council chambers. ADA1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and awarding a contract in an amount of $197,719 plus a 15% contract contingency.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We'll go directly to Mr. Imran, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We are in the process of upgrading some of the features in our council chambers, and as part of that, we're recommending adding a, an additional HVAC unit. This is, would be a 15-ton HVAC unit, which will increase our capacity, provide redundancy, improve the fresh air intake, and minimize the air sound that we have in there. As part of this, we issued a request for proposal and received two proposals back, and these were from Echo Engineered Systems and Johnson Controls. Echo Engineered Systems was the low bid at $197,719, and so we respectfully recommend that the city council approve the resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and award the contract to Echo Engineered Systems. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'll move the item.
But I have, I want to make a comment, but I will second the
Okay, and we'll discuss it.
Okay, briefly.
And I'll let you first, and then Mr. Carpetian.
Echo was, the company was located in Glendale for such a long time, and they left Glendale and they went to Pasadena. So I think that bothers me, that they get the job from Glendale, but they moved their company, look, I mean, central location to Pasadena. That's one comment I have. The second, more importantly, as I said before, of course, this is not, 197,000 is not that big item that we discussed, because we had larger, bigger contracts before. But having just two companies to participate, and, I mean, they offer their bids, is really surprising me. I mean, this is a regular HVAC contract. How come we have only two contract, two contractors that came forward? I mean, really, I'm surprised why this happened in this city all the time. That's, I mean, it's unbelievable, in my opinion. And I complained before, and I want my complaint to be recorded again, that I'm hoping that I will see more people to come forward. Maybe we have to give more information, maybe we have to do, I don't know what we have to do. But the contract of HVAC and only two companies, they come forward, bothers me. Thank you.
Do you want to address that, Mr. Imran? I guess, why are there only two companies that have participated?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We advertised for this, and even before the RFP went out, we communicated with several companies in terms of what we have upcoming. This is a good economy, and unfortunately, we've seen this with our other bids, in terms of our contractors being very busy and not be able to, or interested in submitting bids. We also had very specific requirements in this contract that they had to finish the job within 60 days, because we have a very limited timeframe to make sure that we're, we put the council chambers back in service. So I would only venture against that the combination of these two elements contributed to the fact that we only received two bids.
Thank you. Mr. Carpetian?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Do we have a breakdown of their work that has to be done? I know it says in here that, you know, improve the fresh air intake and minimize air sound and everything, but this is, this, our council chambers is about 2,000 square feet. This is going to end up being $1,000 a foot. Am I correct? Or $100? Yeah, $1,000 a foot. So I don't know, do we need 15 ton? Have we done, who? I have a little issue with the, with the price on this, to be honest with you. I think, I know there's only two companies that bid on this project, but, I wanted to get my phone, if it works. So I don't know, do we have a breakdown of the work that they have to do?
Mr. Imran can cover that.
Sir Imran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, council member Carpetian. We do have a breakdown, basically, that includes the prevailing wages that they incorporated. Obviously, that was one factor in increasing the cost. We have things such as the engineering design, which is about $26,000. They have demolition, roofing, concrete coring, adding up to about $25,000. I'm just, you know, identifying some of the main elements. Duct work, carpentry, HVAC unit itself, the HVAC finish, that add up to about $56,000, all of these together. So, and then we have the commissioning, electrical, plumbing, fire life safety. So when we looked at all of these that they provided us, it added up to the $197,000. And we also did receive the second bid, which was higher, and at $212,793, so we feel that both bids are within, within the same range, so the price is probably in that same ballpark.
Thank you. I, again, I think $100 per square foot for an HVAC system is way out there, and what would the cost of building a 2,000-square-foot unit for anywhere in the city? $2 million? I mean, this, this, I understand that we have two bids, but I can't support, I can't support this, to be honest with you. This is, the construction cost today for a unit, a house, is whatever, but I know there's prevailing wages, I know you have to do ducting and everything, ducting, everything is there, but I don't know how they come up with this kind, this kind of numbers, so.
How much were our restrooms in?
Yeah, 350,000. Yeah, that's another issue, yeah.
So, I mean, compared to, I guess you're making two points. I'm not, I'm not going to argue. I appreciate your position. One is the specifications. Are the specifications too great? And then the second is the pricing for those specifications in line? And the bottom line is the price, and you don't like the bottom line?
I don't like the bottom line.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Carpetian?
No.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is 8B, Director of Community Development, regarding public outreach process for the Glendale land use, housing, and circulation elements. Update development and implementation of a citywide transportation impact fee. Senate Bill SB 743, Implementation of West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. One, motion to note and file.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as Mr. Agajian wrote into the record, this item is before you by way of an update and a note and file, and Mr. Calvert will take you through a presentation, and please provide us with any feedback that you may have. With that, Mr. Calvert.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. As mentioned, the Planning Division and the Mobility Division of Community Development are preparing to embark on some very large planning initiatives, some that will span the entire breadth and scope of the city by way of land use and transportation. We will be touching on environmental justice, many complex elements. So what we wanted to do was be, come before council this evening, also make the public aware of these projects that we are getting ready to launch, and the engagement opportunities that we will be pursuing. The work program, as described, kind of high-level, the names of the projects actually, include the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. That is its own independent project. That was a contract that council approved in late, late last year. The second is a much larger one. It's multifaceted, it has several pieces to it, and then includes updates to three elements of the general plan. That includes land use, circulation, and housing. Also includes the development of a transportation impact fee. We know that that was something that was a priority for council. It has taken us a bit, bit of a path to get here because of several other pieces that will influence and shape that, which we'll go through this evening. And then SB 743 compliance, and that's the conversion per the state bill to measure transportation impacts by vehicle miles traveled and not by level of service any longer. So first, touching on the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. You can see in this graphic, the red boundary shows the study area. What we're really looking at here is taking an inventory of existing land uses that are here. We are looking at multimodal improvements. There are several potential transportation projects that could impact this area, everything from BRT to a potential Phase 2 of the downtown streetcar, looking at improvements to the pedestrian infrastructure, as well as bicyclist infrastructure as well. So several components to this. It's a smaller area, does not include all of West Glendale. As we'll note later, this is intended to help feed into what will ultimately be the East-West Glendale community plan. This is kind of our first move for that. As mentioned, looking at existing land use inventory, and really looking at the relationship of existing land uses with that transportation network that is there. And not only are we looking at, we're looking at the BRT and the head cyclist infrastructure here, and then its relationship to the streetcar. The larger project that I mentioned before that includes the three general plan element updates, the SB 743 compliance and the transportation impact fee, sounds a bit mumbled. There's several pieces to it that are very complex, and it's not just these pieces of that planning initiative that matter. There are also several elements to potential state bills that could be coming down and influencing some of these. We saw that recently with the proposed SB 50, other housing bills that could impact our land use element, our housing element, our circulation element, and we are really trying to be out in front of that. So while we have these different, these five significant pieces, the way we're approaching this, and this is one of the reasons why we have been a little bit slower to come around to start the transportation impact fee, is that that, that piece alone is dependent on having an updated circulation element. We need to bring that in line with current transportation infrastructure, current proposed projects that we have, such as our pedestrian master plan that we'll be bringing forward later in the year for adoption. We have our bicycle implementation plan. We do have our streetcar study. We have several elements to that that need to be incorporated into the circulation element. And the only way to properly have an updated circulation element is to also have an updated, or, excuse me, I'll get to that part in a moment. Part of that is that 743 compliance with that state bill. Again, changing the measurement of impact to transportation from level of service to vehicle mile traveled, and that needs to go hand in hand with this transportation impact fee. In fact, this is something we have to wrap up by end of July of this year.
Can you explain that one more time? Vehicle miles traveled by, and the impact fee?
Correct. So in order for us to develop an effective transportation impact fee, we need to be using the most current measurement of transportation impacts, which would be the SB 743 compliance, moving to vehicle miles traveled rather than the current level of service that we use now, which that measures more
What do we use now?
I'm sorry.
The current level of service, what do we use now?
Level of service essentially measures the delay or performance of an intersection based on the letter grade, A through, I believe, E, if I'm not mistaken. Vehicle miles traveled is going to look at the transportation network in a broader spectrum, if you will. It'll take into account transit improvements that are there, and essentially kind of forecasting how many miles would someone travel. how many miles would someone travel typically via automobile to employment centers, things of that nature. So it's a little more comprehensive.
So development impact fee will be calculated based on the occupants of the new developments and the vehicle miles that they travel?
Correct. It's we can't say exactly how that will be done in terms of level of density, districts. It is intended to be a citywide transportation impact fee, but what that fee will be will be dependent on the location in the city, the density that's being proposed, the transportation infrastructure that's already in place as well.
Okay. But I don't know. How would you how would you calculate the vehicle miles traveled because one live in Glendale and doesn't travel far and the other one works in Orange County and wants to live in Glendale? So I don't know. Okay, but let's move on. I know this is very preliminary, but you got to be very careful as to how are we going to calculate any more fees to any of our developments?
Correct. And in developing that VMT, Pasadena's already done it, Los Angeles has already done it as well. In fact, they have a beta out there. You can use an online tool that kind of helps determine what those VMTs would be, how they would be calculated and what the amount would be. We will be checking back in with council throughout this process as we develop it to get feedback on the this is essentially the tool that they'll be creating to help us become compliant with that.
Okay.
So the last piece or I'm sorry, the piece that would precede all of these though is the land use element, making sure that that is up to date. We want to make sure that our land use element, our circulation are up to date so that we better understand the relationship between transportation and land use. This will also help us in several other ways that we identified earlier in terms of bringing that land use element up to date. We hope that that will help reduce some of the needs or requests for general plan amendments, rezoning, and things of that nature to make sure that this is current. Now, as part of that, one of the things that we identified, because originally these were the four main pieces to this project, something that came up was the housing element update. We saw a unique opportunity to capture that as part of this scope of work, both with the consultant team that we have, and also understanding that there are a number of state bills that have been proposed, could be proposed, that could be bringing pressure down upon us. This gives us an opportunity to try to maintain some of that local control as we saw with some of the opportunities exemptions that some of the state bills proposed. So we really wanted to get in and use this opportunity to update the housing element as well. So with all of that being said, essentially, there's about six major projects embedded in here, some smaller ones as well. Having a robust engagement plan is essential. There will be significant overlap between these projects. So what we would like to be able to do is pair up the engagement where it's most efficient. We understand that with this many pieces moving forward, continuously doing open houses, public meetings repetitively could lead to exhaustion or fatigue amongst the community. So we want to look for opportunities where these projects align and that we can be a little more efficient and a little more comprehensive in terms of explaining these projects to the general public. We'll also be coordinating these with outside stakeholder engagement as well. We understand the metro BRT overlaps with this. It's also essential to our circulation element. We have outreach that we do for the streetcar as well. So it's an opportunity for us to align with outside stakeholder engagement, but also internal projects that we have going. One of the main pieces that we'll have will be project website updates. We launched, as we saw from the streetcar, we launched a separate independent website to help brand that streetcar, to help drive public engagement. We saw very good success with that. We'd like to be able to do the same with both the West Glendale project, but also the the general plan element updates, the SB 743 and the traffic impact fee that we'll be developing. So with each of these, the West Glendale Sustainable Land Use and Transportation Plan will have six total.
Mr. Agujianian?
Can you go back to the previous slide? Eight, page eight? Eight?
This one?
Yes. What you're showing underneath that blue and red, what you're showing there?
This is a sample from the streetcar website that we had launched earlier in the year. If you're if you recall, when we came with the update for the streetcar, we had conducted surveys and outreach through this website. So just an example of the kind of webpage that we would like to build for these projects. So the West Glendale Sustainable Land Use and Transportation Project, we're going to host six total public meetings. This project is about a 12-month process, 13-month process. So essentially, we'd be holding a public meeting every other month as part of this. We're also looking at four community pop-up events. Some of these will be in a spirit that's trying to drive public engagement in a little more entertaining, functional, but fun way as well. One of them that we'll discuss towards the end here is a demonstration project that we would be looking at. The general plan updates would have a minimum of 12 to 18 of these workshops or public meetings. Again, we'd be looking at trying to get some sort of event out there every other month. We want to make sure that the public is well-informed, well-engaged, and having ample opportunities to give feedback. We don't have a defined number yet, but there would also be community pop-up events that would go along with that. Another very important strategy is to be multilingual. In fact, one of the consultant teams, their public engagement strategist is a linguistic specialist. Their specialization is to be able to produce work, to convey work through a number of languages, which will be essential for us. It'll be essential for our printed material, our web material, and to be able to have those translation services at our public meetings. There will also be focused meetings with stakeholder groups, boards, commissions, as we mentioned before, will be checking in with council along the way. We will be forming an internal technical advisory committee that'll include members from Public Works, Community Development, police, as well as the city manager and city attorney's office. Some of the open houses that we'll be hosting, again, we'll be looking to pair this up. We did this earlier this year when we had the Art Soc Arts and Entertainment Events. We also use that opportunity to get feedback on the downtown specific plan, which was also in progress. We also use that opportunity to get feedback on the streetcar. So again, we'd be looking for those kind of events. We intend to have other engagement events for the Arts and Entertainment District throughout the year, so hopefully, we'd be able to kind of piggyback on those and be able to get feedback on some of these projects in addition to the community meetings that we'd be hosting. One of the spaces that we recently opened up was one of the storefronts on Art Soc in the Arts and Entertainment District. We use this as an opportunity to show some of the more refined visions for that street, for that district, and we really want to treat this as kind of an urban design storefront and have the public be able to come in essentially in what would be some neutral territory to come give us feedback rather than a community center, having or having them always come down to City Hall. In fact, a lot of times, we host some of these meetings in the room right next door to take them to a space that maybe is a little more welcoming, maybe not as intimidating to some members of the of the public as it is to come down to a government facility. So we'd really like to be able to have a very friendly face to this public engagement to try to encourage as much participation as possible. When I mentioned pop-up events, one of the projects I mentioned would be a demonstration project. As part of the West Glendale Sustainable Land Use and Transportation Study, we would be looking at potential configurations for bicycle lanes. As part of that, the consultant team has had extensive experience essentially in setting up temporary bike lane installations that could be done through cones, it could be done through potted plants, it could be done in a number of different ways. And the goal there is to be able to set up something based on one of the designed alternatives and to be able to measure the success, measure its failures, look at its impact, and get public feedback. So before we would try to come to council with any sort of pursuit of approval for some sort of design, we would be deploying one of these demonstration projects so that we could come back with some real tangible data and feedback to council before making any of those critical decisions. Again, that idea of getting that public input, collecting data, making a more informed decision rather than something just based off a design on paper. So this timeline represents essentially 2020 and 2021. We understand that some of these projects will extend beyond 2021. There's a number of pieces that will need to be completed, but there are also certain deadlines that we need to meet. SB 743 is one of them. We do need to be within state compliance by the end of July of 2020. And at the same time, we will still be kicking off all of those other pieces. There's data collection for land use, as we had mentioned before, that's important and necessary to complete the SB 743 compliance. It's necessary for us to do the traffic impact fee. It's necessary to update the circulation element. So really, all of these projects are going to be running concurrently. There will be kind of staggered start times and completion dates based on those pressures that we have to meet per state requirements. But we do anticipate all of this work extending out through 2021 at least. As mentioned earlier, this data and this information will also be used to help inform and help us launch the East-West Glendale Community Plan. That's something that we are hoping and intending to launch later this year. But again, we need to collect some of that data through this process to be able to really dive into that planning initiative. So otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have or any feedback regarding our outreach plan.
Questions? Ms. Devine?
First of all, this seems like, and I think we've discussed this, a preemptive strike on the possibility of SB 50. At least we get some early input into our land use and transportation working together.
So what we learned from the SB 50 process is that they were going to have a window for the city to be able to update any community plans, housing elements, land use element, so that they could demonstrate that they could meet the intended production of housing. So understanding that that may still be something that could be in play in any other bill, we'd like to be able to be out in front of that. And at the end of the day, we also need to update these. Many of these have not been updated in several decades. So it's something that it's a little bit of that, but it's also kind of striking while we have an opportunity with some of the funding.
All right. Very good. Very good. I would like to make one suggestion concerning the stakeholders and all the meetings that you're having with stakeholders. I'd like for you to meet with the HOAs privately, you know, not in a public meeting, but actually have them in a room together discussing, you know, this project and get their input now, you know, before we move any further in the process. Maybe, I don't know if you'd do the presidents of the HOAs or representative from the HOAs, but just meet with them instead of, you know, with in public meetings, et cetera.
And we do have that planned as part of the scope to meet with individual groups. We didn't list them all here. We had actually tried to do that earlier and realized it was just way too many. But we do plan to meet with these individual homeowners groups and several others as well.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Agujianian?
Could you talk about this technical working group?
The Technical Advisory Committee is intended to represent kind of a broad spectrum of the city that will most likely have either direct impact from this or projects that may come to fruition because of these initiatives. So essentially, we are choosing two members from Community Development, Public Works. I believe we also have Parks on that as well, city manager's office, city attorney's office, and police to consider life safety. And the idea behind that is that they will be guiding that project throughout the process. They'll be helping to kind of make sure that their voices are represented, their concerns are represented, and it's also incorporated in all of the plans. Also looking for those opportunities to pull in the outside stakeholder groups that maybe one division may not think of immediately so we can bring them in and get their input and feedback.
Okay. Mr. Carpettian?
So this is basically updating our housing element as well as doing the east and west, in this case, starting from west community plan?
So the housing element is kind of one of the last pieces of this body of work. The East-West Glendale Community Plan, that will be separate from this. All of this will help lead into that. It'll provide the necessary data. Even when we say the West Glendale Sustainable Land Use Transportation Study, that is not all of West Glendale. It's just that defined study area. I believe it's Exhibit 1 in your packet. And really, that's to give us the initial data, the foundational work that we need to begin that that community plan.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other questions, 8B is a motion to note and file.
Oh, we don't have to do anything.
I'll move the item.
Usually, we usually we vote on note and file. Some agencies don't, but just for the record. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Carpettian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Nine is a hearing. Nine, a Director of Public Works regarding public hearing on the appeal of the decision of the Director of Public Works granting encroachment permit number EP 573 for the installation of wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right-of-way located at adjacent to 283 Maryland Place, continued from January 28, 20. Additional material submitted by appellant at 1/28/20 hearing. One would be motion denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Director of Public Works granting encroachment permits, number EP 573. Two, motion granting the appeal reversing the decision of the Director of Public Works and continuing the matter until February 11, 2020, for the city attorney to prepare findings consistent with council direction.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Garcia?
Thank you. Just a little bit of housekeeping. So based on the council's discussion and deliberation and vote last week, the matter was continued as a matter of right because of the 2-2 vote. Mr. Carpettian had recused, Councilmember Carpettian had recused himself, and I think at this point, he's going to continue to accuse himself to see if the four council members can have further discussion to resolve the tie before asking him to come back in and participate if necessary. So with that, I will, at that point, I'll have further discussion about the scope of the remainder of the hearing.
I will reserve arguments on bringing back Mr. Carpettian for a later time.
Sure.
It's not germane at the moment. This is a public hearing. So I will open the the public hearing. We had an extensive presentation last week, but we do have new evidence or new some new facts that the applicant would like to present.
Sure. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion is to open the hearing, reopen the hearing, was continued to this date, reopen for the limited purpose of taking in that additional evidence. And it's only to the issue of the alternative site and the feasibility of that. There's some additional information that the staff has put together and provided to you as well as the applicant. And at this time, before we get there, I just wanted, even though it was raised earlier, there was a discussion earlier in the oral communications portion of this meeting about Dr. Kramer's qualifications. I could assure you that he solely works for local government. The reference to his job in industry was over 40 years ago, and he's been working.
And I think he admitted that. He told us that he was.
Yeah, he told us he's got that experience. So it's just on the record, just to restate it again. He works solely for local government, has a lot of expertise, both on the legal side and also on the RF engineering side, to provide his expertise to you as decision-makers relative to the technical issues that were before you. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Imroni to go through a little bit some of the constructability challenges with the alternative. And then if you want to open it up to the applicant or the appellant or any other members of the public to speak to that issue, I do believe you have the discretion to limit the amount of discussion, given that, as you noted, we had an exhaustive discussion on these issues at your last meeting.
So I will hear from Mr. Imroni, and I will hear from the applicant briefly. I think I'll give them five minutes max. And members of the public who wish to address just the issues, well, I don't think I can say just the issues, but try to focus on the new information presented up to one minute. Let's start with Mr. Imroni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. As mentioned by Mr. Garcia, our staff did some additional research on alternative site number one and came up with some additional findings. I should also mention that Public Works staff worked very closely with GWP staff. And one of the main issues our charge was to see about the constructability and ADA-related issues for the new foundation. The current foundation is a three-foot by three-foot by four-foot foundation with a pole attachment. And the new foundation, based on the existing or new light standards, would have to be a four-foot by four-foot by five-foot. So this is an additional one foot in size that would decrease the distance between the back of the attachment plate and the edge of the sidewalk, which would encroach into the ADA zone, basically. So based on confering with our colleagues over at GWP, basically, their conclusion is that the proposed foundation will encroach into the ADA zone. And there is additional concern about the digging, basically, a five-foot-deep foundation and all the underlying underground utilities that would have to be potentially disturbed or added. One fact about this location is that this location is in the Caltrans right-of-way. And we have a maintenance contract with Caltrans to maintain the pavement, basically, above. But anything related to the utilities has to be, there has to be an encroachment permit up to. obtained from Caltrans. In addition, there's potentially a fiber run that may need to be done on our streets to get to the new location by AT&amp;T. And because of the location, this intersection of Louise and Maryland Place, we just repaved Louise in 2018. We usually put a moratorium of three years on any construction, any repaving of our streets, so they can't really go through Louise. They would have to come from Maryland Place to get there. Adding all of these items pretty much together, this alternative site would make it a very difficult site to basically accomplish that, so our recommendation is to stay with the original location. Thank you.
And if I may just touch on that, Mr. Mayor, especially as it relates to the electric substructure, what you have in the materials and also was explained by Mr. Imran is that you don't have sufficient information to know whether or not that substructure can actually be built there. So it makes, it really puts into question the feasibility of building that alternative site out as would be necessary, obviously, to provide for the alternative site. So, you know, our recommendation is in line with the previous recommendation, which is to approve the subject site because of the apparent lack of feasibility of alternative site number one. With that, well, anybody's available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? I don't see him.
No.
Okay, I have a card then from the applicant, Adrian Colici. Five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. My name's Adrian Colici, representing AT&amp;T. And last we left off, we were tasked with taking a closer look at the alternate site one to the proposed location, and we did a deeper dive with our engineering team, and we identified the two potential problems with this location, that being ADA compliance and a basic constructability constraint. I think Mr. Imran made an excellent presentation on these issues and additionally added the moratorium or repavement on Louis that would be necessitated by, or due to the fiber run that would need to go to, across the street to that location. Based on these findings and everything that was presented previously as far as compliance with the existing code and a non-disturbance of the potential project that the adjacent private property owner is planning at that location, we feel that the proposed location still remains the best and least intrusive means of filling the coverage gap at this location. And with that, I can ask you any questions that you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Colici? Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have, let's go to the public. I don't have any cards from the public, so it's up to council for discussion. But one item, if you can address the shot clock issue, Mr. Garcia, what is our time deadline to take action?
May I ask Ms. Marta Rosin to address that question, please?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members during Marta Rosin. The shot clock issue, if we were to enter into an agreement with AT&amp;T to toll the shot clock, that would be a possibility. I know we have entered into agreements on prior occasions with AT&amp;T, but as of now, the shot clock, we are past our deadline to make a decision on this. The decision has been made on the permit. However, the decision on the appeal, we are beyond the shot clock, and AT&amp;T can respond as well. Based on my conversations with them, they have been cooperating with the city in terms of the shot clock because this matter was coming before the City Council for a hearing.
And what is the effect of failing to make a decision on the appeal within the time period allowed?
Arguably, it could be deemed approved, the approval could deem to stand.
And who would make that approval?
The applicant would have to go to court to perfect that.
Or a writ?
Well, it's not a writ. I guess it could be a federal court. Actually, I'm not sure of the procedural, but there is a process for them to litigate that.
Okay.
But yeah, at the end of the day, that, and that's part of the reason it goes into the finding, to, you know, why we're recommending approval, because we do have the shot clock. There aren't, there isn't that additional time to go dig deeper on any of these other issues, and we're basically at the decision point.
Why don't you make this a little more clear to the public? Because I'm not sure, we talk about a shot clock and then make it a little more clear in terms of what it is. And we're talking bad, like it's a basketball game.
Sure. So the shot clock for the small cell applications is 60 days from the date of the submittal of the application. So once AT&amp;T submits the application, then the city has an opportunity to review it and advise AT&amp;T what the application is lacking. If the city was to do that, then the shot clock, for the first time, would reset. It would start at zero again. Every time after that, it tolls. In this case, the application was processed. If I'm not mistaken, we did enter into a tolling agreement at some point for this application to be processed with AT&amp;T. Then the shot clock has, basically, when we say the shot clock has run, it means that the 60 days are over, or the extensions that the parties agreed to, or when the shot clock was stopped because information was lacking and was resubmitted, that time has run as well. So when we say the shot clock is over or has run its course, that means that the time allotted for the city to act has expired. I hope that helps.
This is a federal statute that enables them to...
Federal regulations of the FCC.
Any discussion? I think we know what we're, you know, what the issues are here. Mr. Quintero?
I'll go first, since I voted against it, and I was certainly feeling that this was the better location. I still think that, I just drove by it this afternoon, I still think it's the better location. However, after listening to the staff and specifically the Public Works Director and the research that they've done, I'm prepared to change my vote because I don't think, I took a good look. I actually circled around and looked at the sidewalk for Maryland Place, and it is extremely narrow there. So I agree with the Public Works Director that a four-by-four-by-five box, I'm not, I don't think that would work. I do think it would encroach into the ADA zone. The five-foot-deep foundation, I just, you know, I didn't get out of the car, so I don't know, I don't know if that would particularly work. But for sure, I think the ADA issues alone make it, you know, not feasible to put it on that particular corner. So I'm prepared to change my vote.
Okay, I will...
And I am not responding to your argument last week, I want you to know. That's persuasive, it might have been. The Public Works Director is what causes me to change my vote.
I know when to shut up, so I'm going to shut up.
Okay, so...
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, so I appreciate AT&amp;T and our Public Works Department taking a deeper dive into this after hearing our arguments and I think make a very compelling case. It is, it does seem to be more problematic than we had anticipated or even thought last week, so I too will, am willing to change my vote and deny the appeal.
So I would like to, I guess, motion denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Director of Public Works granting encroachment permit number EP 573, something like that.
It's 9A3, 91, sorry.
So I guess I move the item.
Is there a second?
Based on the information, I just want to make a small comment. Based on the information, and this way, we will not going to be involved with other public entities, I guess, if we would not move it to the other side, because the other side, we will be involved with another entity, right?
I think it's noted by Mr. Imran that Caltrans owns some of that property, so, you know, both the city and applicant would have to deal with it.
And that will take forever, probably, until it comes to an understandable conclusion. So I will move the item.
Is there a second?
Reluctantly, I will second it, and I'd also like to make a fairly quick comment, and that is that I couldn't agree more with the speakers that come here, as I mentioned last week. I mean, to me, it's just an outrage that the FCC, the last time that sort of a scientific approach was taken to this issue, RF and all of the rest of the waves, was in 1997. That, to me, is just beyond comprehension, the way that these systems have grown across this country. And it just seems to me that the FCC would have the ability to say, gee, one-half of 1% of the money, including those, the money that was brought, that was brought into the government selling, the wave length or whatever it's called, that even just a small percentage couldn't go out in the form of grants to nonprofit medical organizations to research this issue. It's obviously, it's not just the people that come to speak to us. I mean, this is something that you hear all the time. People just don't know. They're worried about cell phones and all of the different bombardment that you're getting from Wi-Fi sites, et cetera. And yet, we're all just talking about it, but it just doesn't seem to interest the FCC. And that is, to me, the federal regulatory organization that should be talking about this. They're the ones that should be pushing this, and they don't.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I can't agree more because we have seen the government comes back like 40, 50 years later and say, at the time, we didn't study the issue well, and I think this is one of the issues, but I, this time, so I go along with what has been recommended here. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agagianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Garbetyan? Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. And I do have one card.
Thank you. One card from Mr. Caesar Estrada. Mr. Estrada, come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, all councilmembers. I'm here to follow up my proposal that I bring sometime like November. I wasn't that prepared that time, but this time, I made some presentation, but I don't know if it reached you. I emailed everyone across the, and maybe they have a copy of the email. So let me introduce myself first. My name is Caesar Estrada, with the All-American War Veterans, and all veterans, being a veteran, we're trying to help the, or found, we're trying to raise money for the disabled and wounded veterans. So we started a project called Water, Electricity, and Transportation Museum in downtown, which will be a museum for transportation. It's a big thing. It's about this, my T-shirt. It's, it's the major, could be the major or the reincarnation of the Pacific Atlantic Red Line, Glendale Line. But it's just, it's not just affecting Glendale, but it's coming from Burbank or further out and come to Glendale, then go and circulate on a loop to downtown LA. Going downtown LA, that means using all the existing rights-of-way from Glendale to here. It's all on your email. I wish I could flash it on the screen, but I kept too slow or too late, and I do apologize. But anyway, from here, from Glendale, it's gonna traverse the Dodger Stadium, and the missing, I mean, traverse is not, is gonna be underground, and goes to in front of the Union Station, and go around in a loop on Alameda, going to Washington, and back on This look like, I've been talking to LA Metro, I know our mayor is with the board also, and the group of Joshua Schenk from Innovation, they were saying it could, it's very possible, the thing is, we need the money. After the Measure R and the Measure M, how are we gonna, how are we gonna start a little bit of racing to buy the rights-of-way? Then, so we, I, we think of raising the money ourselves, using a very innovative way of going to fundraising. Since me and my advisor work, doing the business of fundraising on the bus, doing fundraising for schools or churches or the casinos, and besides that, the other businesses come from all the business, major companies here in the region. So if you check the email again, it's a PowerPoint presentation, but it tells you how I started this way back five years ago, more than that, by attending all these seminars, conventions from the national, provincial, national provincial court, Nashville. It's the lottery for the nation. It holds the Powerball, Mega Million, and now it's the other, they hold also the sports betting. So reading that and knowing more about this betting, it's regulated by senator, our senators from our, from our state capital, Sacramento, and all the other states in the whole United States. So there was an event in San Diego last January that I attended. I stopped attending some of these conventions already because it's too, it's too expensive to, out of my pocket, and my friends also not helping me enough anymore. So I just started, I restarted that in San Diego, and I got all these pictures. It's all the email also. How did I...
Your time is up, Mr. Estrada.
I know.
Why don't you reemail that to us? I may have misplaced it.
I'd be glad to. Yeah, I'd like to keep on coming and elaborate more this. It was nothing to the city. I mean, there's like, the initial part will be a little expensive, not in millions, but just a few dollars. But what comes back to us is in billions.
Okay, just a moment.
Has he raised any money? Have you raised any money? Have you done any fundraising? Have you raised any money?
Yes, yes.
How much? How much do you have?
We're not counting, but it's almost like more than $100,000 already, but... We're not counting, but it's almost like more than $100,000 already, but this just to start the museum, because the museum's like, it's far, it's right on the rights-of-way. If you don't purchase that first, or we don't purchase this old rights-of-way coming to Glendale, from Glendale going towards the Union Station, we're not going anywhere. That's the bigger debacle.
I just want to say that you can come up again with maps or something that will be more clear.
Yes.
Then you can explain it better, maybe, will be better.
I mean, I'm just in a short title, so I just throw this out.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Close the meeting?
Would, we have no other cards? We have no new business? Would you like to be recognized, Mr. Agagianian?
For closing this session?
It's up to you. You can make...
I will.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes. I will...
Second.
We are adjourned.